Now therefore be it resolved by the town council that this resolution be adopted and that the town council has hereby authorized to prepare and execute a right of way and easement by in between the town of Robbinsville and the Grand County Historical Association.
With that being said, I make a motion to adopt the resolution to grant waterway and easement to the Grand County Historical Association.
Moving on to old business, Ms. Gross would like to address the board. You've got the floor.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to pass out to you. This is a proposal I put together to give us just some starting ground to work with if you would. Give your mother to read that.
Scott Rogers.
I knew I was getting on the hot seat.
Put him out there. That's pitiful, but that's the best we've got. And this is why we're here, asking if there's some way we can work out a deal with being able to lease your machine.
Well, I know our machine is fairly new to us. Our operator's still learning how to use it.
I'm not sure what you guys are looking at, but I do think that we need to work together, two municipalities in one county. And I do think that one of our maintenance men does need to be with the machine just to kind of, you know, foreseeing this. And I think that we need to try to help them with it. There may be more to it than what they can foresee. And if one of our maintenance men does go with it and it tends to be more than what, you know, that we can help with, then they can, you know, we can hopefully figure out another solution. But I think that we need to try to help them as long as our maintenance workers are, if we have enough staff to work that we can work with alone.
Yeah, they're asking for one week a month or four months. Ms. Gross, I'm saying compensation is paid without being included insurance and taxes.
Yes, sir, it will, whatever. First week of every month, that week Chad sees everybody on deck just for reasons, you know. So I think we can work with them and they'd be willing to work with us on whatever weeks we can give them.
Go ahead and speak. Scott's with us. I'm sorry, I didn't know you were on the phone. Forgive me. I would have read you what the proposal I brought or emailed it to you and I didn't. Scott Camp is here with us and he is going to kind of, he'll give you insight on what his thoughts are on how we would use the machine and when.
So my understanding is just this is a kind of something to give a basis to go off of for you guys that's a little more concrete. So if it would be better to do, you know, a day here or there as opposed to a whole week or whatever, I think this is just kind of a starting ground so you guys understand. Obviously, if a man comes with it, I assume that would be a different rate. I think that's just kind of the going rate for equipment sort of thing. Again, it's just kind of to get the ball rolling on what you got, because, you know, what you guys would need to help and, you know, we don't want to be using your equipment.
I've got a question for her. Can we rent out this equipment if we so choose to, since it's a town equipment?
I'd like to check a couple of things, but yeah, especially being another municipality.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to open it up to just the general public, but definitely another, we could try to help out another municipality of all possible.
And just think about, you know, the employee and as the mayor said, that it covers the employee for everything. I don't know and I just, your approach is we want to work with Lake Santitla, you will, whether it's one day a month or one week a month. If an employee were injured there, you need, that's a call you all need to make to your insurance, make sure they're covered. You know, you're lending out an employee, the other municipality's going to cover pay and benefits and all.
So what if, I mean, I've got, what if we pay the employee and they just reverse it sour to us?
He's still on their property. I would just check on that. You know, there's a few things to check on. You don't want this to come back.
Yeah, we definitely want to help.
Ellen, would their insurance be covered if there was something happened to the machine?
Well, they need to make that call. They're going to borrow another municipal, a different municipal.
Yeah.
I will. And we have our town attorney, Derek Allen, out of Asheville, and he would be willing to write up a lease agreement. We would cover.
Let us check on a few things and we'll get back with you and then we'll work out an agreement.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Can I get an announcement tomorrow's meeting at our town council meeting that we are working together, but we're working out details? Is that a positive move for me to be able to say that?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
Thank you so much. I feel very happy. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Get back to work, Scott.
I'd like for me to get back to work. Bye, thank you.
Debbie, do you have somebody in mind for the?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you too much.
The RTA signers.
Oh, yeah.
I've got the, we're laying it out here.
I'm going to need just to have Brady Cody taken off as a check signer for the Robbinsville Tourism. And at our last meeting, I spoke with the board and I want to make a motion to add Richard Lemon, Dirk Cody, and Mark Ferguson as check signers for the RTA. And I guess we'll take care of that and then we'll need to remove some.
Yeah, we.
I think we can do it all.
Yeah, we're still going to remove Sonja.
Then I would like to remove Sonia Webster and Teresa Garland.
I'll second that motion.
All right.
That should take care of it.
All right. Next up, we've got RevDA, Wayfunk, and Sign. I'll be John Colwell.
And I've actually got three things to talk to you about. I've asked Andy to be here. We need the encroachment agreement. For these wayfunk and signs, they've been sitting and they put us on hold to keep them working. This is a list of destinations. That was the only thing that he said he needed to get the encroachment agreement. And I asked him to be here today. We would have had this taken care of last month, but I had to attend a funeral on the state. Everybody got one? And so I gave him this list of signs and it's, you know, he, this isn't, there's no laws or anything. This is just a DOT policy. And so it's hard, it's hard because we're going to be adding and taking destinations off as the town changes. So it's, but he wanted me to give him a list of anything that might be put on in the near future. So that's what I tried to do, but I don't, I don't even know names. I asked Angelina for what they were going to call the June Luska Memorial Center up here at the lake, but I never did hear back from her. So I just tried to cover things, you know, the names probably changed. But that was what Andy said he needed to issue the encroachment.
That's a DOT's policy. We have no control.
Oh, I know, I know, I know, yeah.
So once he gets this, then we should be able to proceed with the permit?
Yeah, he's got it. I gave this to him a week and a half or two weeks ago. And he said that he would be here at the meeting. And Sherry's been trying to reach him all the moment. Did he ever return your call, Sherry?
No.
So I don't know how to get the encroachment agreement any other way than, I mean, we've given him everything that we need to do. So, but we need, we need to get those finished. It's been sitting and sitting. And, you know, we've got signs on hold and, you know, whatever. So is this something that the town can pursue or how, what do we do? What's our next step here?
That's the DOT's policy. I mean, there's nothing we can do about them.
We can follow up with Andy. We can give him a call and see where he's at with it and if he could get us that permit so we can get it signed because it would have to be signed by both parties.
Yeah, it has to be signed by all three parties, he said.
Yeah. Well, also the state, the town, and RevDA.
Another thing that I want to talk to you about today is the Old Town Hall. Because we've been approached by a fellow that wants to purchase the building. And from what Taco has told me, that you all have to decide whether that's a building that you no longer want to have. And so we, I've tried to set up a meeting with this fellow to go and look, but, and we had it set up and I think there was a water leak and Chad couldn't get to it.
Yeah, there's a process and we probably could get the process from our attorney exactly what steps we have to take and what steps that he'll have to take. Well, for a person, it's different. We have to decide. We have to have a public hearing. It'd take about three months total.
Okay, but I was told that you had to, the first decision that you had to make was to decide whether you.
That's in that process. I just don't know exactly where, what step it is, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
I know that's in that process. We have to declare that the town has no further use for that building. I do know that.
You do that and rig all of this and a regular board meeting and a motion of resolution or motion of public hearing.
Is that the first step that needs to be taken? Because he, you know, if the town wants to hang onto the building, then he doesn't need to go out and spend a lot of time looking at it, right?
Well, he needs to make an offer. I mean, he needs to do an offer to purchase. And when you receive them, I mean, there's no need to go through all this. You can call them that before. If he's truly interested, he can do an offer to purchase.
He can go ahead and do it.
So he needs to make an offer to purchase. Well, then we need to be able to get into the building and look at it.
Yeah, and we have the key here.
Okay, well, like I said, you told me that I had to have a town employee down there to go look at the building.
Well, it's a town building, so I wouldn't feel comfortable having a town employee with you.
And so I talked to Chad and he was going to go down with us, but he had a water leak and he couldn't be there. The owner or the fellow that owns the.
My sale.
This is the first I've heard about it.
Yeah. Well, it's just you, you all had a lease. You all had a lease agreement that you were going to do to have a business and I guess that felt through, right? And so this fellow just approached me about purchasing it and I just am trying to figure out what the road process is to go through.
If you decide you no longer need the bill, well, he needs to do an offer to purchase. Because you want something valid before you, then you have your regular board meeting to discuss how much it costs, whether you've attempted to lease it several times. Okay. And then if with the offer to purchase, and sometimes your buyer gets disturbed, you have to publish you have an offer to purchase and you publish the amount, not the name, not anybody's address, just you publish that you have an offer to purchase on this building. And you give the amount and 10 days has to go by before you can even accept that offer. So, you know, it's a process, but you don't start anything without an offer to purchase.
Offer to purchase is the first step.
But we need to be able to get into the building. So is it okay if I, if I just try to set that up with Chad and?
The mayor, mayor's here most of the day, most throughout the day. He could, he's got the keys in there.
Okay, would you?
Just contact me and make an appointment, you know, whenever we can, you know, talk to that guy and talk to me and see if we can all go down there.
Well, he's a little bit iffy too because his wife is having some health issues and so sometimes he gets, he's, he's. He can stick to his schedule.
Well, if I can't go, I mean, Chad could go or Taco could go or.
Okay. So, and then the last thing that I want to know is about the status of the retaining walls on Main Street because I'm working on a committee now.
We're going to address that.
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
Do you have anything further, John?
No, I just sit and look for that.
It's right after this, after this next.
Next on the agenda is the comp time policy. So we still need to review that.
There was some minor changes made and I think the department head actually looked over it and we've made some changes that they wanted. And I think we addressed all their issues that they have come across. So we've not had a comp time policy. We discussed it several times and then kind of fell by the way. But hopefully if we can get this approved today, we'll have one in that is actually signed by the board. Debbie, you got any questions about the comp time policy? Debbie?
I'm sorry, I had it. So when these employees have to call their supervisor to get pre-approved, does that mean that the supervisor is going to be, gets time for having to take care of that too? I mean, to me, that would look like that's just two people getting called time. Whereas if it wasn't pre-approved by the supervisor, then it's just one person. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If the supervisor is going to have to be called on his weekend or her weekend, does that mean that they need to sit down for at least two hours of comp time for having to take that phone call and getting that pre-approval going?
So that would be true. They would still get the call out time whether they come out or not because they're conducting town business as a supervisor. And it states that in here that they get two hours minimum.
Right, yeah, I see now. I just didn't know if it was actually necessary to have to aggravate the supervisor.
Well, generally that's who they, who they called anyway. They're going to be the first call and then when something happens, so.
And one thing about a policy, I mean, adopting a policy is good.
We can amend it and change it.
And then you can come back and revisit it after it's been implemented a while.
I make a motion that we accept this change of the time policy to compensation. Accept it and if we need to amend it later, we can.
All right. I'll second her motion to accept, to adopt the comp time policy.
Are you unanimous?
Yeah.
All right. Next on real business is the wall on North Main Street. I've been meeting with the DOT officials about that and we're working out the details on it. We don't have no timeline right now, but.
But it's in process.
Yes.
Very good.
Sean, when you say the wall on North Main Street, how many different areas? Is it just North?
We're working on the scope of our, yes.
Okay. So, but they're going to do both sides of the road?
Down here, I think, is both sides.
We're looking at the scope of our.
Okay, okay.
We're going to have our resolution number six. Is that an old business?
Yeah.
Well, that's took care of.
Yeah, that's already been taken care of. So we've got some budget amendments under number seven for the ARP funds.
Motion to approve budget amendment number one for the ARP for the water sewer. And a budget amendment number two for the general fund. What is the ARP, right?
I'll see.
Okay, number eight is the American Tank Maintenance Agreement, addendum number two. So Ellen, on this back page, the total is. Oh, you got to add all these up on the bottom line to get the full total?
Right.
Or from 23 up, I guess?
Yes, from 23 up. Oh, my addition is from 322, March 22nd, and it was 398,562 dollars. You're way below the requirements for a public bid. You still have to have good faith in looking around. And Chad reported that, and a former mayor reported that. They talked with various companies.
But no one else put in a bid, though.
Yeah, you're okay to accept a bid. There was some concern. I think you were in violation of the statute and you're clearly not, clearly not.
So this is for them to, this is renegotiation of their contract? Is that correct?
When they came and met with you all, yes. They said they would do a revised spread. There was the original and they did a revised spread and emailed it and I got it around to all of you.
And?
And so it would start with 23.
Yeah, 23.
But I think we need to add that up so we know what we're doing. As I say, the old one came up, but it was a shorter amount of time. It came up to, the entire contract for all the tanks came up to. What did I tell you? 352,000. So they added a year to this. Can we step out and add this up? Is there anyone out there to add this up? So that's 349. I came up with roughly. 349. I came up with roughly 349, but it's still.
Is there a timeline on this addendum? I don't think there's a timeline over there.
Well, they're committed to a schedule of painting and repair, so under the old contract, you were below 400,000. They added another year, so you'll still be below 400,000.
How long have we been in this contract, please?
Three years.
Three years.
We just.
I mean, it's not necessary in or into a maintenance contract. We can just pay somebody to do what needs to be done cheaper.
But with a maintenance contract, you don't have to worry about.
Yeah, they scheduled it out. The contract I have is for June Luska tank and that's apparently the worst tank in terms of repair and all, and it's the most expensive one for repair. And it's wash outs.
I've got a guy that can do it a lot cheaper than that right here.
I'm just going to say that what they have put in their contract is different than a man that came here to the town board meeting and said he'd do it all for a thousand dollars. That doesn't make sense.
He didn't say a thousand dollars. Right here is his plug. June Luska tank.
Yeah, we'll need one for each tank. Each one of us has.
She was using June Luska as an example.
Okay.
Well, you just need to compare the 88 to 50 plus the 3,500 plus 120 for hydrant and compare it to this.
Now, the hybrids are not included.
Oh, that's separate. Well, I'll make a motion, we'll table this and we'll revisit it next meeting.
Well, maybe.
Until we get some more numbers and if you can speak with this fellow and maybe get one for each tank.
Okay, I will.
And ask for some more information other than just a name.
What do you mean, Ellen?
And I definitely don't want to cancel a contract with someone and not even have nothing, you know, to go by from, I, I, I just don't feel comfortable just canceling it and then just, you know, rolling with whatever because we're providing water for
Yeah.
sales.
Exactly.
And we cancel that contract and something comes up and we have nothing to go to to keep the people here drinking clean water and how does that look on us? We've got to have something for sure taken care of. And through this contract, I feel like we are keeping our waters safe for the customers.
Okay, and if you do...
I will, I agree with, with Brian. Leave it on the table until we can have, you know, more to go by than just just, you know, somebody saying something.
Okay. Well, and when you leave it on the table, if you start getting in any more information like those, it's just Scott One Enterprises. Whereas American Tank put down all their qualifications and what they were members of. We need to know if somebody besides a truck and hand it. This person may be wonderful, but we need a name and their, and their background.
What did you say, qualifications?
Qualifications, yeah. And if you look at the American Tank contract, they put in all their qualifications. And that they were members of, um... For example, American Water Works Association Steel Structure Painting Company. They, they gave their qualifications and they have a, a name. It just says Scott One Enterprises. There's a contact name on here. So, a contact name and qualifications and where they're incorporated. Because we need to make sure they're in good standing. You can't enter a contract and you find, I'll go to Secretary of State. You can do that in any state and get a good standing certification. That's not a problem. We need to know where they're incorporated.
Uh, we'll discuss this more next meeting, but hopefully we'll have more information.
Okay, sounds good. To the further old business. Alright, moving on to new business, uh, the Aldridge Brothers completed their project on Morphe Street, essentially be draining well.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the residents are very happy with him.
That's good.
Alright, next on business, on new business is proclamation Constitution Week. And, uh, Ms. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you. We are the Daughters of the American Revolution Battle of Sugar Town Chapter in Franklin, North Carolina. Uh, this is our Regent Victoria Baker. I'm Terry Moore. I am a member of that group. And we are here to ask the mayor if he would be willing to sign a proclamation for Constitution Week, which will be September seventeen through twenty-three. Nikki, if you could tell them a little bit about what you plan to do with the schools, I would appreciate that.
Uh, well, this year marks the two hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of the signing of our constitution, um, back in, uh, seventeen eighty-seven. Um, and the Daughters of the American Revolution had President Eisenhower designate this particular week as being Constitution Week. So, it's been ongoing since that time. I will be going to Timpano Elementary School on the twenty-second of the month as a colonial character patriotic colleague to present, uh, a program for the fourth grade students about the Constitutional Convention. Uh, as if I were there two hundred and thirty-five years ago. Uh, the children are always delighted, they always ask me how old I am. When I tell them that. But, but I do, uh, present quite a few factual information to them and in terms that they can understand about why we even have a constitution and how it came about.
I'd kinda like to sit in on that flight.
You're welcome to come.
Over at elementary school, is it?
I'll tell, yeah, over at the elementary school, I'll tell the principal that you're on your way to come. But, yeah, go ahead, Terry.
Oh, no, I'm, do you have anything else to say?
No, that's it.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, we would greatly appreciate if you would, uh, sign the proclamation and if you would read it to, out loud before you sign it, that would be wonderful.
Okay. Do you have a paper copy?
It's, what's in it, Patrick?
This is just the original part, it's larger, larger print, I know I need it. And that would be sign that out, yeah, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Okay. Whereas September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two marks the two hundred thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine one five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by Sean Adams, the mayor of Robbinsville, North Carolina, that September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two is hereby designated as Constitution Week. And all citizens are encouraged to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties. Remembering lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Robbinsville to be affixed on this date.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Wanting a coffee? Wanting a coffee?
Do you want to get a copy of that?
Terry, you wanna stand a little closer to the mayor and we'll give the two of y'all to you. This is for our D A, our friend.
I'll give you, you'll sign this one.
I give you mine.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Would anybody like a pocket copy of the Constitution for your own personal?
Yeah, I would.
Great, we have several of those.
Are you gonna, are you gonna hang around to get the seal put on it?
Yes, sir.
Nice. I've carried one for thirty-eight years.
Well, you've worn it out.
It's a new copy right now.
It's in my briefcase. It is, it's torn, it's just cobbled together.
You know, a little interesting note, uh, our constitution, as old as it is, has had fewer amendments than any other constitution in this world over the length of time that it has existed. Twenty-seven amendments, I think?
Eastern Ban is actually working on their constitution. They have a charter, but now they're trying to implement their constitution. They've been working on it for years.
It's not an easy thing.
No.
We were very fortunate when our constitution was originally put together. Had some brilliant minds. Don't know what's happened to all those kind of people, but back in the day, those individuals, they didn't have distractions like we do now.
So, who do I go to to get this seat?
It'd be, uh, Sherry.
Sherry, Sherry will do that for you.
She can go.
Okay, that would go.
Alright, next on the agenda, we've got the, uh, bringing us to participation from the Nanahedge Regional Library. And Franklin Schrick is not here. Addresses.
But, uh, basically, we just, uh... We, uh... We budgeted them, uh, eight thousand, I think, eight thousand a year to the regional library and, uh... We're bringing participation.
It's a new one.
We don't have a blank one, then do we?
It's, it's new, there's one in twenty thirteen, then they did draft it a new one. And it's not December, I read it. They just added... There were formerly just five governments involved. And, um, now seven.
I'm gonna support this, but we need to reach out to county if we're have a, uh... We give the library money and I think the county receives or gets to sit on the board and they have three positions. But we need to give it to county and see if a, a town board member or the mayor itself sits on that board when the next seat is available.
Yeah, I agree, I agree too.
So, and I, with that said, I don't, I mean, I agree that we, uh, signed up agreement of participation for the Nanahedge Regional Library. There's a lot of people use that library here and the functions that they have here. That would be my motion to... This is a draft copy, so I guess they're gonna actually send an actual copy of the original.
Right, because they just drafted and changed it. And it really, um, um...
When we see that...
It, it put in like if you miss three meetings in a row, you're gonna be
Yeah.
dismissed, etc., etc. What it changed was, um, um... Yep, just probably approved that, so, so.
This agreement doesn't guarantee that we give them eight thousand every year. We just, uh, budget that in our, and that's basically what we've given them for the last few years. So, I mean, with that being said, when we get the actual agreement, I would, uh... authorize the mayor to sign it by half of the town.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
Alright. Alright, next up is, uh, number four is Graham County Senior Center Support Request, three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think it's a... It's a budgeted item. And if it's in the budget, then, I mean, we, uh, we approved it when we did the, when we approved the budget, we're just gonna clarify it and get it so we can pay them out, so. And I think this is what we've been given the last few years, so. And it's for a public purpose. So, I make a motion that we, uh... Give the Graham County Senior Center their support request. That was a, a budgeted item for us for three thousand dollars.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
Alright. Okay, um, next up, uh, under number five is, uh, Sherry Williams with Robbinsville City Tower. Would you like to introduce her?
Okay, um, Ms. Williams, um, she had, uh, gotten a late fee for two of her accounts due to payment being inflated, we paid more bills. And so this wasn't an issue as far as any online payment or any banking issue. Uh, normally you could payment, you just normally put in Dropbox and occasionally just drop it inside the office. Um, so when she was aware of the fee having charged, so she asked us if, uh, if we might be, uh, removed.
I mean, we did one last month, but it was due to a banking error. Uh, we haven't released, I don't think, any other late fees that occurred. It was a banking error last time originally we agreed to do it. This, uh, she's not on direct pay or anything like that. She just, it just failed to get here by the due date, is that correct?
Yes.
So, what?
There was no iron building or nothing, it was just, she just late paid.
Anybody have a motion or anything for this?
Did she process it through the mail, Sherry? How many days did it take to get back to Robbinsville?
Actually, it was pretty much Dropbox.
Outside the building?
Yes, yes, here at the office.
I'm gonna make a motion, we reject toward her payment.
Check it.
Next up, we have number six, we have sewer easement for, uh, Mr. John Holmes. I think our attorney wanted to discuss that.
Okay, I have the sewer easement, a sewer line easement here. And, um, it's Innovative Remodeling Properties LLC pointing to grant the town of Robbinsville, um, a sewer line easement. And here's, um, it's properly drawn. The grantor is a legitimate corporation residing, um, on this property and, or, or in the alternative ownership property. And Chad's been working with the grantor of the easement. And then Chad went out, um, I, I got a survey of the property up here in the upper left-hand corner. Chad went and drew a line exactly where the manhole is in the sewer.
And, uh, there's an update with that, I mean, I think he actually, he found the sewer line that used to go to that property.
Yeah, and they've already started work on that property.
Okay.
Started last week, so.
But it wouldn't be an easement because they, the sewer line's already on the property.
So, you don't need?
I don't think so, but, uh, we could take a recess for about five minutes. We get Chad here, because Chad actually...
Okay, because they wanted to grant the sewer line easement, because his attorney said they wouldn't.
That was before they found the one, right? Is that correct? So...
Well, they found one, but was there ever a grant of a water easement? That's what I run into all the time. Pipes are laid and there's no permission, so just...
And I'm sure the shore is probably an overswore line, but it's, it's in the ground and they probably didn't get an easement then. But, uh, you just have a problem of getting like a five-minute recess, we get Chad up here.
No, unless you, unless you want to approve the, in the alternate, you know, approve this unless it's not necessary and you'll talk with Chad.
You can do that.
Because the only, from, the grantor's attorney saying didn't find any sewer line easement. So, you don't quote, have a right to be there if you can't find a sewer line easement, so. Okay.
I would go ahead and, uh, uh, proceed with the, approve the sewer line easement, uh...
From Innovative Remodeling?
From Innovative Remodeling Properties.
To the town.
To the town and, uh...
And for recording it unless there's another sewer line easement out there.
Just for recording purposes.
I'll say.
Goodness, Chad. I didn't know he was in there.
You still wanna get your hands?
Mayor, you care for Grant about a ten-minute recess?
Okay, that's fine.
That way, uh, Sherry can take care of these ladies. And so, I make a mo, who, is that, is mayor or do we?
No, you make a motion for recess.
I make a motion for a ten-minute recess.
Okay.
Oh, second. Morphe Street and, uh, sadly, Morphe would approach me about that, usually the steep grade of Morphe Street. If motorcycles drive up it, they have a tough time getting taken off in the park. And I, I personally saw them do that. It's just one of, we might possibly consider making it one-way or maybe putting up a warning sign for them.
I mean, we've got one ways on both my street and they, they're all on, uh, Circle Street. And they don't pay those signs, nothing to, they still come right up the, up middle. I don't know how many motorcycles have come over this hill right here. You've probably seen it too.
Yeah, I'm about to get one another day, start going down. Yeah.
There was a big RV one up the other day. And, I mean, it's clearly marked at the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, they had to back that down because they couldn't, they were a high center trying to go up. And, uh, they had to back that down because they couldn't- they were a high center trying to go up. So.
Um, maybe we could just pause it and put in a- some kind of warning sign.
We can put a sign, you know, steep incline for something. It might have to be a custom sign.
Yeah.
Because it is two-way and a lot of people use that access without having to go all the way back to.
Right.
Uh, we can put a caution, you know, steep incline or something.
So, you can be good with that?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Uh, we're just making a motion to not- we're not gonna make it a one-way. We're just gonna put a steep incline sign on that street.
Deb agree?
Deb, are you still here?
I am.
Okay. Because that was the Morphe Street, uh, she requested a one-way, but, uh, I suggested we just put like a steep incline sign on it. Knowing that because it's really steep at the tall.
Yes, dangerous.
I agree with that.
Get taken off at the tall. Okay, next. All right, next we got, uh, the resolution for Four Street Drainage Issue.
Forgot to give the different products, we gotta keep them straight. This is that, uh, this is the resolution that we passed last- from last month. Is that- is that right? We passed something about that Four Street drainage thing.
I think we passed the actual resolution.
Yeah, I mean, but we agreed to it.
Yeah.
I'm just making sure this is the same thing as last month. Last time he would just tell us some about it. And this time there's actually a resolution here for that. Have you had a chance to look over that, Ellen?
Are you talking about the cooking? Okay, resolution?
Yeah.
I remember he talked about it, but did he present the-
I don't have my notes from last-
Yeah, I didn't. Did he present the, um, the cost on the drainage improvement?
I don't think it was no cost. It was a P M C four.
Yeah, we're applying for a grant to fix it, Ellen.
That's it, yes. Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
So, this, uh, resolution's in order?
Yes, yeah, that was it. It was the grant, yes. This is good for the grant or it's needed.
Okay, and, uh-
He's going to authorize the mayor some?
Yeah, authorize the mayor to sign the resolution by governing body for an app- body of applicant for the Four Street drainage improvements. And, uh, authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town and, uh, our acting, uh, finance officer, sign as recorded.
Good man. Okay. All right, good deal. All right, next on the, uh, the agenda.
Chad's still in there. Chad? He knows about that.
Yeah.
He's still here. We're on the, uh, Sewer Tap and for High School, baseball field. Uh, you said it was doable? Very doable? Uh, so, all it required was school to do the tap fee, as I'm assuming. And, uh, you know, you know, your guys have it put in. If you had good weather, what, half a day is you-
Nah, it wouldn't take that long, yes.
So, because I think the sewer line runs about behind that building where they want the sewer. So, uh, so what is the sewer tap fee? And it's a, is it eight inch or four? Four.
Sixteen hundred, uh, out of town, thousand and down.
I would, uh, let's see, we'll speak with the school and tell them, you know, that's the fee. But I'm willing to waive the fee for the school system for the tap fee. But, uh-
But that is to a motion for us?
Yeah.
I'm taking.
To waive the sewer tap fee for the school system.
Okay, oh, next up, we got, number ten, we got, uh, advertisement for the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three yearbook.
What do you think? This is the, uh, uh, David, this is the advertisement for the high school yearbook.
Yeah, I was looking at that. Myself personally, I think it would be good if we just done a fourth of a page and actually also donated a yearbook.
Uh, that's- that's okay with me.
Yeah.
So, a fourth of a page and donate a yearbook?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second her motion.
Keep it at a motion. All right. Okay, do we- do we have anything for close session?
No. Well, we can do this one. Uh, the next one is, uh, the check signers for the town of Robbinsville accounts. Uh, we need to remove Sonia Webster from that.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
Oh, uh, this here, I'm sorry, just come in about, uh, to do with a new data system, the sailor R T U at the well site. Wasn't included in the other, and this is the price. I think you told them to get you a quote. And this is a quote from the service that we use. Uh, and it's, uh, eight thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars to complete this data project for the well site. This includes the other ones included, all the tanks.
Yeah.
But we left out well site.
Okay.
And it's, uh, eighty-seven hundred dollars. And, uh, I think between Chad and Lamar's budget, I think the money's there for that.
Okay.
To proceed. So, first, I guess we need to add it to the agenda.
Just a motion to-
Motion to amend the agenda that for the proposal for the sailor R T U at the well site.
Say.
Unanimous.
With, uh, that being said, uh, motion to approve the eighty-seven, eighty-six ninety-five to complete the skater project. That includes, this includes the well site.
Say.
Unanimous.
All right.
Need further review?
I don't have anything. Rand, you got anything?
We have a motion to close the-
Motion to adjourn.
Say.
Unanimous.
Seven P M.